I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. The record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Kerr. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is a proclamation, a proclamation that signifies an event that happens this Thursday, and it has, I think, for the last four, five, six, seven years. Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Big Give Gage was established as a local day of giving, and whereas the Gage County Foundation has established Big Give Gage in a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever is meaningful to them, and whereas Big Give Gage is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper during Big Give Gage and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Beatrice. Now therefore, I stand worth Mayor of the city of Beatrice do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2022 to be Big Give Gage Day in Beatrice, and urge citizens of Beatrice to recognize the tradition of philanthropy as it continues to improve and enhance the lives of all by promoting the common good. Witness my hand on official seal of the city of Beatrice this 6th day of September 2022, and with us is the face of Big Give Gage, Gina Hecky. Gina, you want to come up?
Big Give, this is the fourth year for the Big Give. It has been, it's grown from something that I think we all hoped would be really amazing to something that has shown to be really amazing. We have over 60 nonprofits that participate, and that's just a drop in the bucket for the nonprofits that are actually registered in Gage County as a whole. I think we have heard time and time again from the nonprofits, the donors, and the companies and industries that support the Big Give, that this is an important day for us to recognize because nonprofits do serve a purpose that often isn't identified either by public interest or private interest. So there is a lot of importance in the nonprofits that this day supports, and I appreciate you for proclaiming it.
Thanks, Gina. Thanks for everything you do.
Absolutely. Does anyone have questions for me about the Big Give?
People can still give the other 364 days a year, right?
Absolutely, and they should.
Okay, just thought I'd throw that out. Thought maybe you wanted to add that.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Gina.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to our regular agenda. First is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. First item is approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of regular minutes of the, approval of minutes of regular, I beg your pardon. Let's start over. Approval of minutes of regular meeting on August 15th, 2022, as on file in the City Clerk's office. E, approval of minutes of special meeting on August 29th, 2022, as on file in the City Clerk's office. F, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $452,429.44. G, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $144,405.55. H, refer claim of Southeast Community College regarding damages to their personal property to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. I, approval of change order number one, a decrease in the amount of $26,922.9, and final pay request in the amount of $187,040.58 for the Fourth Street grant to Lincoln and Lincoln Street, Fourth to Fifth Concrete Reconstruction Project to RL Team and Construction as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, approval of special designated license for Stone Hollow Brewing Company for a fall festival event on September 22nd through the 25th, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Invision Landscape Garden Center, 2115 Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. And item K, resolution number 6929, executing the Greener Towns Project Agreement and the Nebraska Statewide Arboretum Waterwise Landscapes to accept the funding grant in the amount of $20,000 to fund the development of a bio-retention basin at the Gage County Foundation Trail Depot. Any item that a council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Ted?
H is in Henry.
Okay. Joe?
I need to abstain from me.
So noted. Okay, anyone else? All right, Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of item H be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda with the exception of item H be approved, accepted, and/or ratified. Your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. Further action on item H?
I move that item H under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss item H. Ted?
I guess I don't really have a problem with it. We're just referring to the insurance carrier, but as I, and I don't have my, obviously didn't have time to go home, get my laptop thing, but wasn't really any information. This was like a one-line thing on a sheet of paper and somebody's business card.
So there was a water meter that's inside, essentially a closet in some of the dorms or the apartments that Southeast Community College has. The seals on it broke at some point and leaked water for an extended period of time until somebody finally noticed it, and so that's the damages that were caused.
Okay.
And obviously, we will figure out whether or not that was something we should have caught or a manufacturer error on the device or where the liability lies, so.
Mr. Morgan?
And if I'm not mistaken, that's probably owned by a SEC Housing Corporation. It may not be SEC itself, since it's the West Mary Properties, just for information.
Very well, maybe. We just talked to somebody from SEC, so.
I just thought there should have been more information on it than a handwritten one-line note in somebody's business card. Just, just saying, not going to vote against it.
Any other questions? All right, your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. Item H has been approved. Next is a public hearing to set fiscal year 2023 final property tax request.
So as we discussed at the last meeting, we went over the budget. The final property tax request for FY '23 for the city of Beatrice is $2,850,000. This is an increase of less than, or approximately one-half of 1% from last year, and we'll talk about later, but the levy is decreasing about 6.5%.
Questions, comments, anyone from the public? All right, your vote, please. I beg your pardon, Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:08 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that the public hearing be closed at 7:08 p.m. Your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. Next, item 3B has been postponed until further notice, so that will come back to us at another time. Item 4, resolutions, resolution number 6930, executing the loan agreement, promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and Michael S. Schaefer and Shelley R. Schaefer for a direct loan in the amount of $56,000 as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDPG grant 21DTR004.
I move that resolution number 6930 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6930 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This is another part of our downtown revitalization grant. As you see, $56,000 to Michael Schaefer. Most people are more familiar with the movie theater. Those are the properties that are looking to get improved at this particular grant for this loan. Like all the others, it starts off as a loan, assuming he keeps the improvements there for five years, and it gets forgiven as part of our agreement with the state of Nebraska. The improvements be made here at 6:08 Court Street, the marquee, are going to be marquee repairs, so the letters, the letterboards that are up there will be replaced. 6:15 Court Street, he's going to remove an air conditioner off of the awning that's there or the marquee. He's going to return the old neon with LED neon. So basically, it's going to be improving those marquee areas and make them look nice and take them back to what they looked like before, this time with LED lights as opposed to neon.
Questions, comments? It's going to be very visible, it's going to be really nice. Anybody from the public? All right, your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. My question is, how many more of these do we have?
We have one more remaining that is not signed as of today.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next is item B, resolution 6931, executing a loan agreement, promissory note, deed of trust, personal guarantee, and any and all documents necessary to issue said loan between the city and Mama Bear Den's LLC and Kurt Hagerman for the economic development loan totaling $100,000 from funds derived from the LB-840 fund.
I move that resolution number 6931 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that resolution 6931 be passed and adopted.
So a couple of years ago, the city acquired the property there at Ninth and Monroe Street. We demolished the house. We took that as part of the payment. We've sat on it now for a couple of years. We sold it here recently to Mr. Hagerman, who wanted to come in and build a house there. He's now coming in and asking for an LB-840 loan to help with construction of that workforce housing unit that he's putting up at that lot. If you look through the agreement, it's a minimum of 1,500 square feet, three bedrooms. I think completion date is sometime in December is what he's shooting for. The loan itself, again, is $100,000. The term of it is upon sale of the property or, I think, September 30th of next year, so basically about a year to get things done, 6% interest. Any of that, Kurt, anything you want to say about the project itself?
We're moving right along, so, thank you.
CRC did recommend approval of this as well, so.
Mr. Fairbanks?
Well, I don't have a problem with what's going on. I have, I think it's a good project. I've got, I guess I've got a couple of concerns. There's no, you know, LB-840 dollars. We're not creating any jobs other than the guy that's building it. I, I would have been more than happy to give him the property instead of sell it to him. I don't know what we sold it to him for.
Sold it to him for $2,000. He builds the house by that timeframe, the rest of the purchase price is forgiven.
Okay, so I've got a little problem with coming out of LB-840, although I don't have a good place, another place to take the money from. I also have a little bit of a problem with, the building's already going up, and it's, for me, it feels a little bit like asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And so I looked at your website and noticed he had a lot proposed at 1105 Elk. There's nothing there. I don't know if you own that, or, and you've got a couple in Blue Springs. I don't know if you built there. I didn't have time to drive to Blue Springs and look at them, but I, my concern is, is that, and I, and it seems like we're, it's a little bit more of an interest than we're normally charging with the LB-840. My guess is that that's because it's such a short term and that we're going to turn it over quickly, but we have no other place to give him money from this?
No, one of the other ones we look at is the Rural Workforce Housing Fund.
Right.
We initially looked, initially sent him there to go look there. At that point, they did not have funds available, and so at that point, that's why they came back to the LB-840 and went this route.
Well, like I, like I said, I think it's a good project. There's just something, there's, I have a couple, two or three things about it that I just don't like. I wish we would have, wish we as a body would have had an opportunity to, I don't know. I don't have, I don't have a good reason to be against it, you know? I have several reasons to be for it, and I just have a few kind of reasons to be against it, but I don't, I guess I just don't like it.
Rick?
I applaud Kurt for what he's doing and everything, because this is exactly the price range of houses that we need in town, but I too have been wondering about whether coming out of LB-840, and that was a question I was going to ask, was if Rural Workforce, was there was any money available for that rather than using the LB-840? I kind of wonder, down the road, are we openers, subject for a can of worms of other people wanting to do this?
Well, we've done it before. You know, the Department of Corrections built a house for us, I think it was on Elk Street.
Yep.
That was LB-840 dollars, and there was another project.
Excel Development.
Excel Development is another one, so it's not.
We were a little bit more partnered on the one through the Department of Corrections. I mean, we, we were more partnered with that.
I'm just giving you an example.
I know, I know, Stan, and like I said, I think this is a good project, but I, I'm a little concerned about depleting the LB-840, but obviously, if we deplete them, we're going to just put more money back in there. I think we should have more money in that fund, and if the Workforce Housing Fund needs more funding, we should be funding that more, because this is something that we're, this is something that I asked to see done for years, so I'm glad that somebody's taken it on, but.
What's attractive about it is the payback is really quick.
Hopefully. A year's not quick, but it is, it is, it is an LB-840 world. I know it's, and, you know, some of these, that we just passed one for, you know, five years, but I, I hope you understand my concern.
Sure.
Do you want to come up and answer any questions?
Hold on, let's have the council do it first, Kurt, but we will.
I think we all know, nobody else is trying to build any spec houses other than out at Sun Ridge. We got contractors that probably could, and they're just not, so I don't have any heartburn about this at all.
Kurt, if you want to come up, and if there's any questions that the council would have of you.
Gary, my, my heartburn about.
Just, Kurt, just name an address, please. You can sit down. Name an address, just for the record.
Other contractors, you have a lot of contractors, then what do we do? Because we've already done this.
Kurt Hagerman, my address is 200 North Douglas Street in Blue Springs, Nebraska, 68318. So, sir, if you have any questions, that's why I came to answer any of your.
Have you built something in Blue Springs? I saw your website. Have you got something for sale? You got them built there? You had two, is that?
Just, just one.
Okay.
So at 200 West Broad Street, it's a lot there on the main drag.
Yeah, Newark.
Again, one property at a time.
Right.
Part of that, my neighbors recited them. So I looked at my company and being in Gage County and that load of moderate income homes is where I've kind of thought there was a niche to solve that problem. And so I'm a new starting business, so moving down here, Gage County now has a new builder, also creating jobs, and most of my contractors are local, and so using everybody in this area is kind of part of my plan also, so.
Well, I agree with Rick. I think that this is the target price range for housing. It's just, I guess, I guess I've put up the things that bothered me about it. I hope we don't have a problem down the road.
We spoke previously, I don't know, three months ago?
I was going to say it was probably two months, yeah.
So you plan on doing this with some other houses you have in, in mind?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Kurt, when you say most of your, the people you hire are local, what percentage breakdown? 70, 80, 90% are local?
90.
90?
Yep.
Any questions from Mr. Hagerman?
Well, you're exactly the price range we've been talking about, and nobody else is doing it, so I think I've, I think I'm fine with it, so.
Thank you for being here, Kurt.
My last thing is, I'm a new business, and so this is, thank you for helping me. This was why I came to the city, is because of just starting out, and so I need just a little bit of help to get the first couple sold, and then I.
And hopefully you won't be back.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kurt. Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Any comments from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. Resolution 6931 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6932, executing the change order between the city and Skyline Construction Incorporated for the partial demolition of 411 Court Street.
I move that resolution number 6932 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution 6932 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So we're working on the demolition of 413 Court Street. As part of that, the contractors come to us with a change order. They're proposing to have a partial demolition of 411 Court Street. This would be the building to the west of 413 Court Street. This is also commonly known as the German National Bank Building. The back half of that building is in need of being demolished as well. The contractor would like to do it as it gives him additional space to work. We have an agreement with the property owner, David Lang, and he would repay $13,000 of the demolition cost. It's what the initial cost estimate was, and so that's why we signed it for $13,000. As you see, the change order is now $26,000. We will see if we can get David Lang to increase the amount that he will pay back. However, it may not be feasible, and so the city has to be prepared to pay the additional $13,000 if we proceed down this path. So what you have before is the change order from Skyline Roofing to take out, as you can see, the box there and the red on the memo there, that portion of 411 Court Street, and proceed with demolition. I believe, talking to Mr. Mainz today, their plan would be to have their crews here for the next couple of weeks to start demo.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. That is approved, 7-0. Resolution 6932 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution 6933, establishing various fees.
I move that resolution number 6933 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6933 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
As we went over at the last meeting, with regards to the budget, we bring out the fee resolution. The only fees that are looking to increase all have to deal with MARS or sanitation department. When you look at those, yard waste would go up $1 per month, residential recycling would go up $1 per month, and the residential garbage rate would go from $18 to $20 per month, so an increase of $2. Went back and looked today, the residential garbage rate hasn't changed since April 1st of 2020, it's been at $18. If you think April 1st of 2020, that's when we all first started to learn what COVID was, to take you back in time, and social distancing and all those fun terms came out at that point. So we've had a pandemic, and we've now had inflation since then, and that's why we're looking for an increase here of just $2 on the residential side. Other than that, the rates inside the, the fee resolution don't change from last year.
Questions? Ted, or, I'm sorry, Gary.
I guess my question is, we've got these other contracts out there, as I asked Tobias for the information, and they're paying less than we are. I don't know if it's a wise thing to raise our own city so we can subsidize other contracts. I understand why we got the other contracts, was to retain and get contracts for the business that was already there. I understand that, but I would just as soon wait on, on at least the residential part of it until we get those other contracts in line with what our own citizens are paying here.
As I understand it, those contracts are with the other communities.
Correct.
Right.
That contract is a set fee, okay?
It's a what?
It's a set fee.
Rates were raised in April of this year, is when all those rates for the other municipalities were raised.
And considering the cost of that, what, do we have any idea what that's really costing us to go to those other towns?
I can't tell you off the top of my head a breakdown for what it costs to run to Western or Dakin. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
You know, I had probably the first 15 years of my working life setting up routes in about four counties around here, and we worked very hard to know our costs on that, and I know that our city government isn't like private business, but I would think that we would at some point in time find out what it's really costing us to do that.
The, what you have to remember, and we do know, I mean, we know we're making money on these routes. Where the money comes from is the residential, the rural residential customers you can pick up along the way, and then you try to get out to go get to that next town. We've made a conscious effort then, where we are at Western or Dakin, try to pick up rural residential customers in that area to continue to make it a viable option to go out that distance.
But we don't really know what it costs to go get those?
Yeah, I mean, we, all the rural residential customers are at $23.
But I mean, our cost to run those routes. What's it cost to a mile to run the truck with the men and everything?
Jason, you want to come up?
His answer to that is no. He doesn't really want to come up.
Welcome, Jason.
That's, if we were to look at, I think what we use to judge an hour, I think we classify a guy at $40 an hour. That's figuring in his benefits. I think we classify the truck at $100 an hour is what we, we classify that at also. So you're looking at a guy that runs to Dakin and Western, there's generally two people, three people on that truck, two throwers, one driver. You're looking at about $220 an hour if you figure the truck and the three drivers. And so if you figure the, the, not figuring the diesel that it's going to take to run over there, if we were to go just to Dakin or just to Western, we could figure that out. Unfortunately, we hit 40 homes, 50 homes before we ever get to Dakin. And so we'll do those 50, we'll hit Dakin, we'll do another 20, we'll hit Western, and then we'll hit another 35 on the way home. And so the Dakin-Western, Dakin, there's roughly about 85 or 87 houses in Dakin, and there's about 65 or 70 in Western, give or take. That's what we do. So you're looking, give or take 145, let's say that for the two villages together, give or take, with that, 145 stops, we probably have, I'll bet we push 170, 180, 190, give or take. We have a lot of stops in that, in Dakin-Western. That's by far our, probably our biggest route. And so our numbers have increased. It's amazing how many rural customers we've picked up in the last year. I know we lost Cortland right shortly after we took over. We lost their contract. Waste Connections came in and, and just undershot us, just a crazy number. And unfortunately, well, they're paying for it because of the number they did was so low. But with us losing Cortland, we still had, we still had a substantial increase for MARS in the first year, and that lets you, and those numbers are just off of rural customers that we've picked up at $23, because we haven't picked up any other villages. It's just off of the number, sheer number of rural customers.
Did those contracts have a clause for a rise in diesel fuel like some of other stuff did?
They have a clause in it that states that we have the right to raise rates. I think they're reasonable. They go back to their board at that point. I don't believe they have a necessary guess or charge in them. I have to go through and look. I don't remember one off the top of my head.
Okay.
Stan?
Any other questions? Yep, Ted?
So if we didn't raise the rates, the $2, would we still be unattractive? Hey, we bought this, we knew how many days, weeks, months, years it was going to take to actually own it, and we could control our costs. We didn't raise it to $2, we let everybody keep that in their pockets, we still have courage to do that?
No. If you don't raise the race to $2, then we're not going to be able to afford to buy the trucks this next year that we need to purchase, and we'll continue to have high maintenance repairs.
And it's just like a quart of milk. It's gone up substantially. Gas, oil, tires, repairs, gone up substantially.
I live in the same world you do. I got you. I just wondered.
Make it a point.
Yep, I get you.
Any other questions, comments from the audience? Thank you, Jason, and your vote, please, and that is approved, 6 in favor, and Mr. Barnard votes no. Next is an ordinance vacating the following described real estate, Lot 9 Whispering Pines Estates, second subdivision, and a part of Lot 2 Whispering Pines, first subdivision.
I move that said ordinance be given number 22-27, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number 22-27, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please, and that is approved, 7-0. Ordinance number 22-27 by number the first time, ordinance 22-27 by number the second time, and ordinance number 22-22nd, 27. time, and ordinance Number 22-22nd, 27, by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-27 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance 22-27 be passed and approved. Discussion?
So the next two items you have here, both were presented to P&amp;Z, and they recommend approval. This has to do with Mr. Zoller's house out in Whispering Pines addition. He owns two lots. The two lots are in two different subdivisions. As far as the city's concerned, we were able to combine them, he could build his house over that lot line, we didn't have any issues there. However, the county cannot combine him, those two lots for taxing purposes. So he gets two different taxing statements. The only way to correct that is to replat everything. And so what you see before you tonight is the vacation of those two lots that he owns, and then the next item up is the replating it, so they're all on one lot.
Questions? Comments from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance 22-27 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance approving the plat of Whispering Pines Estate, 4th subdivision of the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-28, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 22-28, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-28 by number the first time, ordinance 22-28 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-28 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-28 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance 22-28 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-28 has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance vacating Lot 1 and lots 7 through 13 inclusive, Block 6 and lots 1 and 2, Block 7 and vacated alley in said Block 7, and that portion of vacated Front Street and Chester Avenue lying adjacent thereto, all in Belvedere Heights, in addition to Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-29, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fraylon, that the ordinance be given Number 22-29, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. Approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-29 by number the first time, ordinance 22-29 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-29 the third and final time.
I move that said ordinance Number 22-29 be approved, passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance 22-29 be passed and approved.
Similar to your last one, this one's out in the Lake Ladue area there. If you recall here, a couple of weeks ago, we vacated Chester Avenue and agreed to sell it to Mr. Messman. He is now taking that and all the other lots out there that he owns and replating them into one lot. And so, first thing we have tonight is to vacate the rest of the lots that he owns, and then the next item up will be replating everything out there into one particular lot. Planning and zoning is recommended approval of these items tonight. And other than that, it will, his address will change from a Chester Avenue address to a South Center Street address, and, or South Center Street address, and so-
You're a little ways off there.
A little ways, but I got there, didn't I? South Center Street. And so, that'll probably be the biggest change.
Questions? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-29 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance approving the plat of Messman's addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-30, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given Number 22-30, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-30 by number the first time, ordinance 22-30 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-30 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-30 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance Number 22-30 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance 22-30 has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance adopting the biannual appro, biannual appropriations bill for fiscal year 2023.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-31, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given Number 22-31, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-31 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-31 by number the second time, and ordinance Number 22-31 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-31 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Claybaugh, that the ordinance Number 22-31 be passed and approved. Tobias, anything?
As part of our normal budget cycle here, we have to approve the biannual budget. This year, it's $54,316,835. That includes all your utilities and everybody else rolled into one budget.
We've had a couple of public hearings on this. Any further questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-31 has been passed and approved. Mr. McLean?
I move to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2023, by an additional 1% as authorized in Section 13-519 of the Nebraska Revised Statutes.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2023, by the additional 1% as authorized in Section 13-519 of the state revised statutes. Tobias?
So restricted funds are another one of the limits that the legislature sets upon municipal governments. They are allowed us to increase them by 2.5% by rights. You can increase them another 1% if this body so chooses. We always recommend you increase it by additional 1%. Doesn't mean we're gonna use it, doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, but it allows you to continue to have those restricted funds available for future use.
Questions? Comments? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Next is Resolution Number 6934, setting the property tax request for the city of Beatrice for fiscal year 2023.
I move that Resolution Number 6934 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fraylon, that Resolution 6934 be passed and adopted.
So we had the public hearing on earlier today. Again, the, the property tax request for FY23 is $2,850,000.
Questions? Comments? From the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved, seven zero. Resolution, Resolution 6934 has been passed and adopted. Next is Resolution Number 6935, calculating the amount of unused restricted fund, funds authority.
I move that Resolution Number 6935 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution 6935 be passed and adopted.
Again, just as we talked about restricted funds, this one actually sets the amount, it's calculated at $918,231.60.
Questions? Comments? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven zero. Resolution 6935 has been passed and adopted. Next is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the public forum? Anyone?